The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is called to order today is April 8, 2014. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Kevin Williamson. Heavenly Father, Creator God, we thank you for another beautiful day in paradise and we thank you for the courageous gift that you've given to the city leaders here at Riverbank. We ask you now that you send your spirit of cooperation and like-mindedness and strength to these leaders as they give of themselves for others. We also thank you for the courage that Karina showed to her family and to her daughter and to her community in giving of herself and responding in help and also calling for help. We always thank you, Lord, for all of those gifts that you give us. We always thank you for all those things that we take for granted. Be with us now. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Cal Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Conflict of interest. Any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we move on to presentations. Item 1.1, Promulgation promoting National Library Week, April 13 through the 19, 2014. Vicki, I'll invite you up.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good.
Good. I'm going to be doing Storytime in May?
Okay.
If you still do it.
That's wonderful.
Okay. City of Riverbank proclamation, whereas library use is up nationwide among all types of library users, continuing a decade-long trend, and whereas a literate workforce is essential to the cultural and economic health of our community, and whereas reading is a basic key to achieving personal success in school, in business, and in life, whereas librarians are actively building partnerships in community and making special efforts to reach out to parents, children, and low-literate adults, and whereas libraries ensure equal access to knowledge and information and offer valuable reading resources and services, and whereas librarians and libraries are actively involved in providing equitable access to the Internet and other computer technologies, and whereas libraries provide free resources for the evolving needs of the community such as employment searches, online interview preparations, resume assistance, and tutoring support, and whereas libraries offer preschool Storytimes and summer reading programs to encourage children to begin a habit of reading that will serve to benefit their personal and professional lives. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby proclaim April 13 through the 19, 2014, as National Library Week in Riverbank, and urges everyone to visit our library to take advantage of the wonderful resources available to our Riverbank residents. Signed by the City Council, the 8th of April, 2014. And here you go.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Would you like to say a couple words?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for your support of the library. I love working for the library and I love working in this community.
Thank you very much. Item 1.2 is the recognition of Riverbank Little League. Do we have a representative from the Little League? Well, we'll recognize them on the field later on in the year. Now, item 1.3. Chief, would you give us some background, please?
Sure. We have an extraordinary young lady here, Karina, who was involved in helping emergency responders treat her sister, both in determining what actually happened as far as medical background, the accident, and then also she had a tremendous calming effect on not just the emergency workers, but her family members and everybody else at the scene. Now, that's unique because very few individuals possess that ability to go ahead and be exposed to something traumatic and still have the wherewithal to mitigate and help things rather than aggravate them, let alone somebody that's her age, because I believe you're nine years old. Is that correct? Okay. Her sister, who is six, is doing much better and on the mend. And I'm going to go ahead and just read a letter that I authored to basically express what was communicated to me by our deputies that were at the scene, who were very impressed. "On Wednesday, March 5, 2014, you witnessed an accident involving your sister Camila. I want you to know how impressed I was with you and the way you helped us and your sister. Your actions may have very well saved her life that day. You tried to stop your sister from entering the roadway and told the deputies what had happened. Deputies who were there told me they were sure, excuse me, your actions and yelling to warn your sister caused her to slow long enough to where she was not directly in front of the vehicle she collided with. Your sister did receive injuries, but she never lost consciousness and is now on the road to recovery. When deputies, firefighters, and paramedics arrived on scene, they took care of your sister and wanted to know what had happened. You were very brave, helping guide them to Camila and telling them what had happened. This helped deputies with their investigation. When your sister was placed in the ambulance, you bravely got her the security she needed by getting her purple blanket and telling her everything would be okay. You helped your mother with your brother, who was very upset. Your brave and mature actions during this accident helped everyone involved and also saved your sister from further injury. It may have even saved her life. Many people, even adults, could not have been as much help as you were that day. It is people like you that make a difference. On this day, you helped everyone involved and acted very bravely. I am very proud of you." Thank you for all your assistance. Signed by myself, Chief of Police, as well as the Sheriff, Adam Christensen. So with that, Deputy Vern, who was on scene and was one of the deputies that relayed to me how impressed he was by Karina's actions, was probably the catalyst, the source of all this, in letting me know just how well she performed after being exposed to that traumatic event. So, you want to present that?
Sure.
You want to say anything or no? Yeah.
All right. Okay. I was there that day and I have three young daughters. I'm very
proud of you. Okay? This is from the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department. It's for you, Karina Santana, in recognition of your actions and your bravery. And it's signed by our Sheriff, Adam Christensen. Okay? So this is for you. Oh, okay. Let's get a picture, I guess.
Picture. Photo opportunity.
Photo op. Do you want to hold that one too?
No.
Just do this. Come here, right here. Right here. Let me help you. Okay? Just like this. And look right over there. Now, Chief's got some more stuff for you here.
Well, actually, the city and Riverbank Police Services wanted to make sure that you had some tricks to go along with your study, because sometimes a piece of paper is boring, especially to somebody who's in school all day. So...
And Chief, the American...
Do you want to read this to you for me?
Oh, there you go. That piece of paper's not boring, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 no. Keep going, keep going.
They have to do something to make up for the firefighters. This is for my brother, Chris.
Aww.
That's okay. Now, we didn't forget you either, okay? So we got you something too. Camila, this is for you, and there's some flowers too.
(mumbling)
No, no more blankets. You don't want to have to bring two or three. Now, there's one thing on this bag that not a lot of people get, okay? This little pin right here, like an angel on your chest. I wear it every day, okay? When we put our lives at risk, sometimes you need someone watching over us, so that'll help you, okay? They wouldn't give me one for six years. Nope. Me, I went almost overnight. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Long learner.
You get all that? You'll handle this one.
Now, Karina, you're not done. You have to come on up here now. You can leave those there, because we have one from the City of Riverbank. Okay, this is a proclamation. Come on up a little bit closer. There we go. This is a proclamation, and this is to you for your actions that you took. The City of Riverbank proclamation, whereas on Wednesday, March 5, 2014, Sisters Karina and Camila Santana were playing in the family driveway when Camila suddenly darted towards California Avenue, and whereas Karina tried to stop little Sister Camila, who slowed but continued into the roadway and was struck by a passing vehicle and injured, and whereas nine-year-old Karina witnessed this accident, yet was able to calmly communicate with the first responders, deputies, firefighters, and ambulance personnel to help her sister, and whereas Karina's compassion for her younger sister and composure and courage displayed during this traumatic event is worthy of public acknowledgement. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Riverbank that Karina Santana is one extremely and courageous young lady. Sign this day, the 8th of April, the City Council. And congratulations. Now, can you get a picture? See, we have all the police mounted. That's probably what would be published. It'll get well soon, okay? Thank you. Item 1.4, Chamber of Commerce Presentations on the Farmer's Market.
Mayor, it's my understanding that Guy Berkey would be here representing the Chamber of Commerce this evening. Maybe he's been delayed at this time.
Well, then, we'll do, with the indulgence of the council, we'll do item 1.4 when he becomes available. Item 1.5, Presentation by Stanislaus County District Attorney. Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, thank you very much. And congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien, council members, Mr. Hallinan and Ms. Anderson. It's my pleasure to be here with you this evening. It's been a few years since I've spoken to the council and there's been many faces that have changed, if not maybe all of them. So it was time to come back. And the reason I'm here this evening is I'd like to share with you is an update what's happening in the criminal justice system with our office and then how we interact with your local police department and give you some idea of what's happening in your community. I take very seriously in the DA's office our mission statement, and there's a big, long one. You see the first paragraph there. We've boiled it down to three phrases: Seek justice, serve justice, and do justice. That saying, that mantra really is, we have it on each of the three floors of the DA's office. So as you come and go, no matter which floor you're on, you're going to see that and be reminded of what we do every single day. So the DA's role in the criminal justice system, a lot of people don't understand that we have, you've got prosecutors at multiple levels. There are prosecutors at the federal level, and those are your U.S. Attorneys or your military JAGs. At the state level, you would have state attorney generals, and they handle a lot of cases where there might be a conflict of interest at the local level. In some jurisdictions, large cities, you have city council or city attorneys, and they would handle misdemeanor cases. In Stanislaus County, the only prosecuting agency is the district attorney's office. So we handle all felony cases and all misdemeanor cases from all agencies within the county. So that's all your local police departments, Seres, Turlock, Modesto, Oakdale, Riverbank. We handle cases from the sheriff's department and then state agencies, the CHP, Fish and Game. So you name it, if there's a law violation, it comes into our office for review. We serve as a law enforcement advisor and we also like to partner with law enforcement agencies to try and reduce the amount of crime. The way that the process ultimately works is your local agencies would take a police report from a citizen who's been victimized. They would do the investigation, write the report, refer it to the DA's office, and then we review it for legal sufficiency. We determine what the appropriate charges are, whether they're felonies or misdemeanors. We issue witness subpoenas. We request additional follow-up. Charging standards for us, it's a little different, it's a lot different, than it is for police agencies. They can make an arrest based solely on probable cause, which means that they have evidence that shows that a defendant probably did it. They can make the arrest. For our purposes, if we are going to charge someone with a crime, that can be a life-altering event, obviously, we have to believe that the individual committed the crime and that we can prove it to a level of beyond a reasonable doubt to a unanimous jury of 12 people, taking into account all potential defenses that may be raised. So it's a much higher standard. You're going to see that as a result of that, that means we do not file every case that's brought to us. Time deadlines. If a defendant is in custody, we have 48 hours from the time the officer makes the arrest for him to do all the police reports necessary, refer them to our office, have us review it, type up the reports, and get them to the court for filing. So that's a pretty quick turnaround. A misdemeanor defendant has a right to a trial within 30 days, and a felony defendant has a right to a probable cause hearing in court within 10 days, and then after arraignment, to a jury trial within 60. We have partnerships currently, our office does, with the Central Valley Gang Impact Task Force. I have two investigators assigned there. We partner with the Stanislaus County Auto Theft Task Force. We obviously still remain, hopefully, we're not number one this year, but we obviously have a lot of auto theft that occurs in this county. So it's an active task force. We participate in the Family Domestic Violence Coordinating Council, the Stanislaus Drug Enforcement Agency, Stanislaus Elder Abuse Prevention Alliance. The homicide on-call program is something that I think is very important. Each week, we have a deputy DA who's on-call, as well as an investigator, and we have our victim services coordinator on-call. So if there's a homicide anywhere in the county, we get the call from law enforcement, a prosecutor and an investigator, and even a victim advocate can respond to the scene to provide appropriate assistance. I think it makes our cases much better right from the very beginning. We participate in LEX, which is a monthly meeting with all the police chiefs and sheriff and CHP commander and the probation chief. And then the Family Justice Center is something that I'm particularly proud of. It's been up and running for about three years now, and it essentially will provide services for victims of domestic violence, child abuse, sexual assault, elder abuse, and human trafficking, all in one place under one roof. Currently located in downtown Modesto at 1625 I Street, it is a godsend, and I am absolutely convinced it's saving lives, especially for domestic violence victims. So our budget for this year is at about $15.7 million. The bulk of that is obviously general fund money. We receive a little bit of grant money to help us cover an insurance fraud investigator. We do some elder abuse advocacy, that's a victim advocate. We have two attorneys that are funded by the Office of Traffic Safety, and we have a renewed focus in the last two years, a very heightened focus on driving under the influence cases. And the reason for this is there's been an incredible uptick in the number of people who are out driving impaired by prescription medication. We did not have officers or attorneys really adequately prepared and trained to handle those cases. That has changed as a result of this grant. Real estate fraud, this is one of the few areas where actually our office does the bulk of the investigation as opposed to local law enforcement. We have very, very talented, very experienced investigators, and they essentially do all the real estate fraud investigation that happens in this county. And then we provide victim witness services, and that's funded through grants. As of this year, we have 144 total positions allocated, of which only 118 are currently filled. So you can see that as a result of the budget crisis, we've taken a significant cut in staffing. But we keep fighting. You know, we're working really hard. We should have 53 attorney positions. We actually only have 44. That includes myself, the assistant DA, and three chiefs. So of attorneys that actually go to court every day, there's only 39. So they're busy. We have, instead of 18 criminal investigators, we only have 12. And then we've got support staff, as you see. So some idea, this will give you some idea of how busy we are. We appeared on 87,000 different court settings last year. That's a lot of court settings for 39 lawyers to handle. We reviewed over 10,000 cases that were brought to us that were felonies for issuance, and again, just over 10,000 cases that were misdemeanors. I told you earlier, we don't file every single case we get. If we did, the courts would be really unhappy with us. So when we take into account what we can reasonably expect to prove, we filed, out of those 28,000 cases, we filed 13,900 approximately. Murder cases, this goes back a few years. I just wanted to give you an idea of what's changed in the last four or five years. In 2009, we had a total of 90 separate defendants sitting in custody, waiting trial, preliminary hearing, or sentencing for homicide. 24 of those were pending jury trial, just the jury trial. So if you compare a total of 90 separate defendants in '09 with 13, we're up to 122 separate homicide defendants pending trial, sentencing, or other hearings. 58 of those are currently pending jury trial. 50 are pending the preliminary hearing. Many of those cases are multiple defendant cases. We can have a single case with three or five or seven different defendants, particularly if it's a gang type of situation. Three-strikes cases. I like to clarify some things for folks, because people tend to still have the view that prosecutors are sending people to prison for life for stealing a piece of pizza, and I'm here to tell you that's not true. It's never been true, at least not in this county. So in three-strikes cases, you can see that between 2008 and 2013, what's most significant is, look at the bottom, grand total filed, runs about 70 to 75. There was a significant uptick in 2012. I'm not sure why, but we've come back down to a level that we were previously accustomed to of 74 last year. Riverbank was running about two a year until last year, and we didn't have any three-strikes cases filed. But the really significant part of it is those are the number of cases filed where an individual could be subject to a sentence of 25 to life because of their criminal history. They had two or more prior strikes. If you look at the very last sentence, you'll see that in 2008, we only sentenced five people to 25 to life as three strikers, and then six. In the last two-year, none. Now, the reason for that partially could be these cases can take a while to get through the system, but the other reason is the bulk of these cases are resolved by way of a disposition short of 25 to life. We have that discretion, and the judge also has the discretion, even if he disagrees with us, to strike a strike, as we call it. So we're very cautious about the kinds of cases where we impose a sentence like that. This will give you an idea, in 2008, when we had five defendants sentenced to 25 to life, these are the kind of people we send. Buddy Gary was sentenced to 25 to life. He was convicted of a brutal physical assault on his girlfriend, where he was actually banging her head into a sidewalk over and over and over again. He had three-strike priors for rape, burglary, and robbery. He got 25 to life. Shortly after we convicted him of that, a cold case was solved where he had previously raped and murdered an elderly woman back, I think, in the 70s. So he's somebody who richly deserved it. The other folks also, as you can see there, mostly have sex events priors, and they deserved it. In 2010, this is just an example, Mr. Rodriguez was convicted of two counts of attempted murder, domestic violence, false imprisonment. He had great bodily injury enhancements, weapons use enhancements. As you can see, he's not a nice guy. And he had two prior strikes for robbery. So that's a case out of Turlock where this is an individual, we said he deserved to be put away for as long as possible. Cases from Riverbank. You see a comparison there in 2006, 2010, and 2013. I've given you the number of felonies that are issued and rejected in each of those years. So we go from 184 issued felonies. There's been a drop, obviously, over the last few years to 142, and I'd like to say that's because your town is a safer place. I'm not sure that's true.
That is true.
I hope it's true. Yes, the numbers are good. Number of misdemeanors issued, there's been an uptick, as you see there, from 103 to 178, and then down to 135. And you probably still have that Riverbank wine and cheese thing, and I'm sure they're all just visitors that are doing the misdemeanors.
You're absolutely correct. Yes.
Right? That's what we have. Murder cases, you had two in 2010 and zero in the other years. And gang cases, we had three with four separate defendants in 2010. This gives you an idea of, if you're comparing jurisdictions, percentage of cases filed. Riverbank, in 2008, we filed 75% of the felonies and 69% of the misdemeanors, which is right in the ballpark with the other agencies. 2012, it was 78% of the felonies and a bit of a drop, 46% misdemeanors. And there's a reason for that. There's 2013. As the economy became more difficult and we lost a lot of our staff, we had to tighten up on issuance, which meant that we were not quite so aggressive in terms of what we would file. We wanted to be sure we had a good, solid case. We couldn't wait for law enforcement to do the follow-up that they would normally do because they had lost so much staffing. So we were more cautious about what we filed. We also implemented a diversion program on misdemeanors. So 500 misdemeanor cases a year were taken out of the system. Those are like first-time misdemeanor offenders. We don't file charges on them. We send them to a program where they get some counseling that they pay for, and the recidivism rate from that program is actually very low. We're very happy with the program. So we're saving people from getting some misdemeanor convictions and taking some cases out of the system. Gang and homicide comparisons by city. Riverbank is very good. In 2008, of course, zero gang cases or homicides. 2013, again, zero. Now, you obviously had some in-between, but Riverbank, again, scores very well as a good place to live. We have some special services and units, special victims' units, where our folks will concentrate on the domestic violence and child abuse and sexual assault. We have a child abduction unit mandated by statute. This is not your stranger sort of kidnapping of a child. There's actually a significant amount of instances where a parent will steal or conceal their child from another parent. And so we are brought into the case and we act on behalf of the court to try and reunite the child with a parent who has custody pursuant to law. That keeps us pretty busy, unfortunately. So we've got gangs suppression, domestic violence, real estate fraud I talked about, juvenile services, victim services, and misdemeanor diversion. I'm going to touch on this real quickly. This obviously could be an hour or more presentation. But gangs in Stanislaus County, I updated the numbers today. Our gang investigator has indicated number of known gangs currently in the county, about 50. Number of documented gang members, meaning they have to meet certain specific criteria in order to be called documented and be entered into the system, 2,800, almost. It's like 2,700 and something. So just about 2,800. But the number of folks we actually believe are gang members, 6,000. That's a lot of gang members. We don't have that many officers, unfortunately. Current projects, Family Justice Center, I talked about. It's really, it's a wonderful thing for this county. And again, we've got folks that'll come out to service groups and talk for an hour about the, or 20 minutes, about the Family Justice Center and all the good it does. The gang injunction, we have one in place in South Modesto. I would, once we get our staffing up and running a little more, we hope to get more gang injunctions in more of the areas where there's a real high density of gang activity and violence. The one that we have in the South Modesto area has proven to be effective. Crime rate has dropped. I gave a presentation not too long ago at Crow's Landing, at a business on Crow's Landing Road. I talked about the gang injunction, which is in effect right across the street. When I was done, a young man came up to me. He's maybe 18 years old, 20. He says, "I just wanted to come and tell you, my family's lived in that neighborhood for over 20 years, and ever since, you've..." for over 20 years, and ever since you've had that gang injunction in place, it's a much better place to be." So that made me feel really good about what we've done. We're working on trying to get the arson task force up and running again to make sure that all the arson investigation officers and firefighters are trained appropriately so we can handle arson cases well. And then ongoing, of course, is media and public outreach. We want people to know what we're doing, how we're doing it, why we're doing it, and be able to answer questions. A lot of folks know who the police are. They see them on the street, very familiar with the police sheriff's department, but most people don't really understand too much about the DA's office, and they don't want to, which I don't blame them for. But we're here to help as best we can crime victims and then hold the defendants accountable. So that is just a quick overview of what we've done and how things are going with Riverbank Police Services. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any comments or questions?
No, thank you so much for sharing that information with us.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
And I had a chance to visit the Justice Center.
Yes.
Family Justice Center is a unique and remarkable place to be, and I recommend anybody, if you need help, to go, it's there for you.
It absolutely is. Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Right, item two, public comment, no action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, a matter presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Are there any public comments?
My name's Ben Talbert, and I live at 6797th Street here in Riverbank. I'm with the Rural Neighbors. My wife's the head of, really, with the Rural Neighbors, but I'm stepping in for her. The agenda that the Rural Neighbors came up with is they would like to have a tea party in June and have, like, tea and, I think, little things to eat. And so, like, I don't know, they haven't decided how much, but the proceeds what they would make would go into for the veterans' luncheon, so we could make some money so we could have the veterans' luncheon. This is what we do with the Rural Neighbors. We just try to do things for the community, but then we don't keep the proceeds. We put it back into the community and the veterans' luncheon, and they would like to use the Community Center for this. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Seeing none. I'd like to indulge the council to go back to presentations. Item 1.4, Chamber of Commerce presentations on the farmer's market. Mr. Berkey.
Hi. Actually, I was really enthralled by what was going on with law enforcement on there. I think that's going to be, that's kind of nice to know that the farmer's market's going to be coming in, and it's going to be a nice, safer place thanks to law enforcement and the district attorney's office for doing that. She's already left. But anyway, so we're moving along with the farmer's market. We're getting the finalization of all of our certifications in and everything, but we have a lot of vendors coming into it. We're going to have some bands that are already scheduled on. One band in particular that's actually already been an opening band for Wynona. Made some phone calls to some bands that I helped out with some concerts, and I said, "Hey, how much would you charge?" And they said, "Well, what's it for?" And I told them, "It's just a farmer's market, and how much would it be?" And they said, "Well, you've helped us out with other things." So fortunately, we're going to have some good bands coming in. We're excited about that. I did a, this is something I was working on, we're putting out in the paper, because the paper's actually going to be helping out with it as well. They're coming in as one of the sponsors. I talked to the manager and that, so I can hand a few of these out.
And that paper is?
The Riverbank News and the Oakdale Leader as well. And then also, we're going to be putting it out. We're starting with the publication going out to everybody in Riverbank, Oakdale, Knightsbury, Valley Home, all over Facebook and everything with the rock deals that goes out on there with all the community announcements and everything. And you guys can just pass it around, you can actually see it down at the bottom if you want to see what we have on there. We're looking forward to doing a lot more with the seniors in the area as well. I know we've had our members actually working on getting the senior meals in there and actually having some more events specifically towards seniors. We're also reaching out to the Hispanic community. A lot of farmer's markets really have kind of left them off to the side and not really marketed out to them. So these, the ads and everything we're doing are also in Spanish as well. And we're going to be concentrating in the concentrated Hispanic areas, plus to the general public as well. And all the posters, we're actually going to have one side in English, one side in Spanish. I know some people have an issue with, like, why not? They should learn. No, actually, we want to make sure we reach out to everybody equally. And we don't have extra size to put Hmong and every other language on there, but we figured the amount of community members that we have in the communities in the area, but we're actually going to be marketing it out to everybody in the entire area. So try and make this a farmer's market like it used to be, back on Wednesday nights, and not in the hot sun, and with a lot more family activities. So I believe we're actually incorporating the family fun night in there as well. And so we'll be, you know, getting that involved, and we'll have the city logo on there on the bottom corner as a sponsor because the city's providing the park and everything, and want to make sure that the city does know to set up a booth there, too, for all city events and for Parks and Rec to give out information. We also have a member of the farm bureaus that are actually going to get involved, too. They're actually getting information out to get more farmers certified, more farmers involved into becoming actual farmers, not just somebody growing vegetables in their backyard like I do. And so we're actually going to be bringing them in with the booth, and they're going to give out a lot more information. We want to actually get more people involved with water conservation. That's another thing that we're kind of going to try and get a group or a service entity to actually come in and actually have, you know, something, information on water conservation. So if the city has something to put up on there, that would be great, because that's one thing that's a concern of the farmers as well as the citizens in the community as well, so. But that's pretty much where we're at with it. Everything seems to be moving forward. We did have a little bit of a hiccup on our thing. We had a computer glitch that kind of lost everything on there. So, actually, literally did go up in smoke, but we fixed it, and we've got everything back on track on there, so. But any questions at all?
Do you have any mariachis or Hispanic-Mexican music lined up?
We do have a Hispanic band, not necessarily a mariachi band. We've talked to a lot of the community, well, not everybody in the community, but people that we know in the community, and mariachi is a particular type of music.
Happen to like it.
Oh, yeah, and I like it, too. I can't understand what they're saying, but I love it. I want to dance, and I have no one I'm dancing to, but, and, oh, wait, not supposed to dance and dance. But anyways, yeah, so if we do have a mariachi group come in, that would be fine, but, you know, just different types of groups. We have a total of 20 nights with live music. So we have, like, so we're...
You have Mother Teresa in the centers.
You know, I haven't got ahold of them. Do you have a contact for them? Because I have a couple, I have like, I have like nine nights, I can't figure out what band to put on, so. But anyway, so, but if you have bands or anything, if the city has somebody that they'd like to actually see there. We're trying to keep this at a very low cost to people. We did lower some of the rates on the things that we're doing. We're trying to just make it more advantageous for vendors to be there and for businesses to come out and show their goods, and for farmers to come out. And we have a lot of different things in play. We have, well, the senior meals, they get vouchers, so they come in, they can spend those vouchers with those farmers. We also have WIC program coming in, and they're going to be able to actually use those WIC vouchers for fresh fruits. They also have EBT coming in, so people can use their EBT cards to buy fruits, kind of encourage people to eat healthier on that side. And we're also going to have several nights that we want to have for health and fitness and for students to. I've got a couple of groups from the high school have contacted me. They want to actually, like, color guard and things like that, that want to kind of, you know, do something for that, and I'm trying to figure out how to incorporate that in. But hey, if kids want to do something, I'm going to figure out a way to make it work somehow. Maybe get the mayor and city council out there to, you know, do some color guard stuff, you know, flip those little batons around. But, so anyways, we also have bags that we actually have that will be up for sale as well, and we're also giving vouchers to people who buy those bags to buy farm-fresh vegetables as well. So we're doing as much as we can to keep those farmers happy and coming back next year to make an even bigger event next year. And it is open all along through the whole season. We didn't do a closed season like some of the farmer's markets do, where everybody has to be signed up the first day or they're not in. We actually have it more of a rolling, open farmer's market, so. But, yeah, any questions besides some mariachi?
Sounds like you guys have done a lot of organization and hard work, and I'm looking forward to it.
Well, I'm going to look for you being there, too. We will be.
We're getting excited.
I know all your faces, so I'm going to make sure at least one night, one person has to be there, you know? You don't want to see a grown man cry. So we are working also, at the end of this farmer's market, we're going to redo our Blues and Vibes. It happened to be canceled because of the death of one of our members that was handling the Blues and Vibes. We're actually doing that, and we're going to do it at the very conclusion of the farmer's market. So we're going to kind of have a little bit of a car show kind of thing on there, too. And I think that's pretty much about it. We need more volunteers, so if anybody wants to come out and help, or know any Boy Scouts clubs or groups or, you know, anything wants to come out and help, we're always going to look for other entities in the city as far as, like, other service groups and clubs to get involved, too, because it's really a community-based farmer's market. It's not just the Riverbank Chamber. It's not just that. It's opened up to more than that, and we want to make sure everybody's encouraged to come. And we have, actually, we have a whole row of service booths available, too, so those service clubs can come in, and we're working on making it a pleasant event for them as well, and the Community Center, you know, being a highlight there with a little band stage off to the side there, so.
I would suggest that you contact Rotary and the Kiwanis Alliance of Gone.
Lions are gone.
And the Women's Club, and are there any other service groups?
I know the Women's Club, we were having trouble getting ahold of on there. The Kiwanis, you have, you can't, oh, you rock.
There's two members on the council, so.
Okay.
We could shake her up, too.
By the way, that means everyone here has my cell phone number, so, you know, somebody call me on that one. But, yeah, definitely, those service clubs are welcome.
Have you been contacted by the Boy Scouts at all?
Actually, one troop is mentioned, but they haven't returned anything back on there because they're trying to get their groups, or they have spring break going on, and they have summer, so they're kind of deciding what to do, what they want to do on there. But if there's a particular, anybody in the audience or anybody who knows a specific troop that would like to come out and, you know, collect cans and keep the cans or something, you know, kind of use it for a fundraiser for them, so. But it's, again, it's a community-based thing, so we want to make sure as many can come as possible. Any other questions?
Oh, just a comment.
Did I forget something?
Yes. Well, not really. Okay, what I was going to say was that, in keeping with the city's campaign for Heal, Healthy Eating, Active Living, that's what this whole program also was about, so we are stretching that out and involving the whole community with that and just keeping forward with that, so.
I forgot the acronym on there, thank you.
That's okay.
That's what I meant about the activities, getting people involved.
We're going to have a group, a dance therapy group also at the Community Center.
Zumba.
Yeah.
Which you won't see me, so. Apparently, they actually shoot cattle for making moves that I make or sing like I do, so.
Zumba's a lot of fun.
And I, we'll see you there, so. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And like I said, give me a call. Everyone has my cell phone number, so just give me a call, so, thanks.
Thank you. Moving to item three, consent calendar, consisting of item 3.1, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of March 24, 2014, regular city council local redevelopment authority minutes. Items 3B1, approval of March 3, 2014, special city council local redevelopment authority minutes. Item 3C, award request for proposal for civil engineering services to Golianni &amp; Cole, Inc., and authorize city manager to enter into a contract with Golianni &amp; Cole, Inc. to perform general municipal engineering services for the city of Riverbank. Item 3D, award bid for the Slowie Seal Project 2014 Phase II, and authorize execution of future change orders. Item 3E, confirming city council approval of, one, resolution 2014-018 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California authorizing the approval of the agreement with the Riverbank Rotary Club and the assumption of their Cheese and Wine Festival rights, including limited property and appropriation of up to $15,000 from the general fund contingent on the need to cover any of this cost. And, two, resolution number 2014-019 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California authorizing the approval of the performance agreement with Chris Vicky Presents, Inc. and the City of Riverbank for the planning, organization, and implementation of the Cheese and Wine Festival and the allocation of up to $15,000 from the general fund contingent on the need to cover any of this cost. And, three, resolution 2014-020, correction, 020, and the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California authorizing the allocation of $5,000 of seed money from the general fund for the 2014 Cheese and Wine Festival. Okay. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of the items?
Yeah. Is that where I did it?
That's where you do it.
All right. Item 3B, please. Can we just make a correction to the minutes on that particular item where it stated the motion moved and passed by a vote of 5-0, and that was actually 4-1? So if we can correct that?
Also, in that same area where it was requested about a conflict of interest, comments on a conflict of interest, that there was no conflict of interest? Thank you. Any other requests? Is there any requests to discuss or pull any of the consent items as read? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for recommendation.
I move that we approve the consent calendar as read and amended.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and a second to approve their consent calendar as amended.
Council authority member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Council authority member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Council authority member Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item six, new business, consisting of item 6.1, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California to rescind City Council Resolution Number 2008-072 and Resolution Number 2008-079, and terminate the related memorandum of understanding between the City of Riverbank and Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District, and to approve the city to relinquish the administration and responsibility of the fire inspection services to the Stanislaus County Fire Protection District.
Mayor members of City Council, this is an unusual item in that we are asking for City Council approval to rescind the actions that allowed the city to do fire inspection services in order to turn those services back over to Consolidated Fire. And I'd like Ms. Marissa Garcia to present a review of this, this item for, for the City Council's review.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'd like to give you a brief overview or a brief history on how this issue came about and how the city ended up doing fire inspection services. So in May 2008, the City and Stanislaus Consolidated began to have discussions regarding the transfer of these services to the city. The services that were included in this discussion were fire prevention plan checking services, fire alarm testing inspections, and fire sprinkler inspections. The purpose was to provide a one-stop shop for permits and inspections. Previously, Stanislaus Consolidated had offices that were located in the city of Modesto on Oakdale Road. So what that did was that applicants would have to come to the city and apply for a building permit. We would then send them to Stanislaus Consolidated in Modesto in order for them to apply for their fire inspection permit and pay their fees. in order for them to apply for their fire inspection permit and pay their fees. And then they would have to return to the city for their final issuance of their building permit. In order to avoid all of those vehicle mile travel and the additional trips that had to be made, it was decided in July of 2008 that the memorandum of understanding between Stanislaus Consolidated and the city would allow for the city to provide these services on behalf of Stanislaus Consolidated. And so during this time, we also approved a resolution which allowed the city to set fees that would be enough to cover, uh, the providing of these services. In 2008, that was prior to the city's general fund having had such a big impact due to the recession, we had three building inspectors that were on staff and that were available to do a lot of the services in-house. And we began to provide these fire inspection services as well as the plan checking because we did have a plan checker on staff. Currently, we only have one building inspector on staff. Through retirements and a reclassification, the two other building inspectors are no longer providing this function. So that necessitated the city to have to contract out this service to a third-party consultant. Since that day, since 2008, Stanislaus Consolidated has actually moved their offices into Riverbank. They're now located on Topeka Street, which is just one block over from our city hall. And currently, with the, um, agreement that Stanislaus Consolidated has with regional, Modesto Regional Fire, they have the staff with the expertise to be able to take these services back on. Currently, we are still having discussions with Stanislaus Consolidated regarding the city being able to continue collecting the fees that would be associated with these services. Once again, being able to provide our residents and our applicants with a one-stop shop. And we will continue to provide them with any assistance during the transition phase. And so at this time, we are recommending that the city council adopt a resolution which would rescind Resolutions 2008-072, which allowed us to set the initial fees, and 2008-079, which allowed the city managers to sign the MOU and terminate the MOU as it stands now between the city and Stanislaus Consolidated. And we would relinquish, uh, the responsibilities for these fire inspection, uh, plan checking, and other services, uh, back to Stanislaus Consolidated.
Who currently does it for the city?
Currently, it is our building inspector who is on staff.
And not, um, partialled out?
As well as a third-party plan checking service.
Okay, that's, and so that plan checking will continue in-house?
The plan checking will now transfer over to Stanislaus Consolidated. Modesto Regional Fire actually does that service for them for some of their other cities, such as Waterford and Houston.
'Cause I had a story to tell about the plan checking, but I won't tell it. Okay? And there won't be any issues if Consolidated moves to Oakdale?
No, they've assured there'd be no, um, no issues with that and that's why we've left open the discussion of us being able to collect on their behalf. We currently provide that service to Stanislaus County for the collection of their public facilities fees. So we would set up a similar arrangement with Stanislaus Consolidated that would allow us to collect the fees on their behalf and then remit them to them at a later date.
Any comments, questions? All right, this is a public hearing. I'd offer any public comments or questions on item 6.1. Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for recommendation.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we accept, um, item 6.1 as stated.
A second.
We have a motion to approve item 6.1 and a second.
Council member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Council member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Council member Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, a resolution of the local redevelopment authority of the City of Riverbank, California, authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with the Army to extend protection and maintenance payments for the Riverbank Army ammunition plant.
Mayor Chair O'Brien and members of the authority board, um, this is an item that comes before you on an annual basis to, uh, look at lease amendments for the ongoing operation and maintenance payments for, associated with the Riverbank industrial complex, also known as the local development authority. Ms. Olson, the executive director, will be providing the staff report this evening.
Good evening. Uh, this is something, as the city manager has said, comes before you. It's a rite of spring, more or less, but I did want to make sure that, oh, that wasn't good. Thank you. How about that? There we go. So let's do a little background. The LRA has a LiFAC, a lease in furtherance of conveyance, otherwise known as a master lease for the Riverbank industrial complex. And part of that master lease, uh, we signed it initially April 1st, 2010, and the, the master lease itself, or the LiFAC, runs until 2015. But every year, the Army and the LRA negotiate a list of services that the Army may, uh, want the LRA to take care of or specialize things such as, um, if there's a theft of something, we may replace. We've had some copper theft, so we replace the lines for the Army. Adjustments in that, uh, it's, it's actually officially called protection and maintenance. We often call it O and M, operations and maintenance, because it is a maintenance contract on the site. Uh, it, the Army changes their footprint from year to year and particularly with something that you're, we've been going through, which is the remediation and removal of personal property means that the space that the Army is taking up on the site has been greatly reduced. There's no more surplus Army equipment in the protection buildings. Therefore, the Army has no more use for that property. That reduces their need for power, their need for security, a variety of things. So, um, every year, we assess where we are and we, uh, issue, we discuss and decide on a new protection and maintenance payments. So this particular lease amendment itself, again, the Army redefined the services that the LRA will be responsible for for the next year between April 1st and March 30th, 2015. And the protection, protection and maintenance payments were adjusted accordingly. Those things are memorialized in this lease amendment number six. I wanted to, before we talk a little bit more about that, kind of show the historical process. As you can see, in 2010, uh, we were receiving $900,000 and each year, it has gone down. Uh, and that is in part because, again, as we say, the Army has less need for services, but also because the, all of the revenue that's on the site has to, is required to go back into the site, that revenue is used for some of this operations and maintenance, as is expected. So for this year, in 2014-15, the new number is 98,000. It's about 70,000 less than last year. It's a loss in revenue, but we, um, believe we can manage that with additional increases in revenues. I wanted to just let you know what those responsibilities cover. We're very specific about them and what that costs associated. We do well maintenance. There are permits associated with the site that will not transfer until the property transfers. Those things that are in the Army's name, the LRA maintains for them. Well maintenance, the permits and the testing associated with those. Some electrical PMs and repairs. Fire suppression systems such as onsite extinguishers, alarms, and risers, we make sure are in working order. Maintenance and general repairs, storm drain management. They pay a fair share of security. And weed abatement and landscaping management. Every year, they weed spray the, uh, 100 acres that are surrounding the industrial site. And, uh, share of facility management costs. That is it in a nutshell.
Any questions or comments?
Let me make one other comment. What you had in your packet was the draft lease amendment. It has adjusted language to reflect changes in our, um, what we will be providing. And that has gone to the Army for finalization. I don't have the final copy before you. It's pretty standard, but, uh, that is why we're asking for the city manager to finalize and execute when we get that final copy.
Seeing no comment here, is there any comment from the, uh, community? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for a recommendation.
I have one question before we move on. I remember that there were some, uh, there was a question about the fees that are to go to, um, Consolidated Fire. Would those fees, are those fees included in this amount?
So my understanding and from, uh, what we have found is those fees are associated with, those fees are assessed to the property owner, which is the Army. So the Army has been assessed those for years and years prior to us being there and that assessment belongs to them. We are asked by the Army to pay for a fire suppression system that is on-site. So, no, those are not included in this and per our negotiations with the Army, they are not included in the fees we're paid. Those responsibilities do not fall to the LRA.
Okay. And Debbie, is, is it correct, though, that in the event that there was an incident that Consolidated needed to respond to, that that bill would be paid by the Army?
Right, there, there is, um, a fire, and I may say the act wrong. There is a federal, uh, rule, I think it's the 1974 Fire, uh, Local Fire Suppression Act or something like that, that says that, that the obligation of the federal government is to pay for services that are rendered. So if there was a fire and the Consolidated Fire District came out, we would be assessed a reasonable cost for those services, but that the local government, um, provides services to, whatever services are provided in the community are the services that the federal government has an expectation of.
I'm not, do you want me to say it again? I've, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve item 6.2.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve item 6.2 and a second.
Authority member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Authority member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Authority member Tucker.
Yes.
Chair Campbell. Vice Chair Campbell. Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.3, strategic plan, objective met, care homes.
Yes, um, Mayor, Mayor O'Brien and members of the city council, um, as you know, during our strategic planning session, one of the items that was brought up was the, the impact that the community care homes have on the city of Riverbank. And as part of that, the chief of police has taken a very active role both before the strategic planning session and since the strategic planning session to address some of those issues. And, and that included some meetings that he and I participated in over the course of, of the last, um, month or so. So at this time, I'd like Chief Kylie to come and provide an update to the city council.
Mayor, vice mayor, council members. During the month of February, the city manager, I had met with the three most prominent care homes in Riverbank. And I guess when I say prominent, uh, they were care homes that, that typically generate the highest call volume for us at Riverbank Police Services. Um, things like panhandling, uh, loitering, uh, vehicle versus pedestrian collisions. Those types of calls, uh, can get generated by residents of the care homes. So our interest was in trying to go ahead and, was, was in trying to meet with them and, and ensure, uh, quality of life and, and safety issues are addressed and improved upon to the best of our ability. So when we did that, uh, we met with the directors and they were very receptive, um, very accommodating. They had the exact same concerns that we expressed. And what we found, it was really an educational piece for myself, I know, and maybe the city manager as well, because there are, although they have these concerns, they are, they have to work within certain parameters to ensure that, uh, their tenants' rights are adhered to and met. So although they may, uh, not want their tenants to be out in the roadway and potentially struck by a vehicle, they can't do something like, uh, have a secure yard fence, you know, to try to prevent that, um, because otherwise, it, it's in direct conflict with patient, some patient rights. So, uh, they also take some measures to, to try to do some, I guess, behavior modification. Uh, but they, again, they have to abide by those rights and respect them. So although they are aware of these things, they're, you know, they have limitations. Um, and one of the solutions that, that we came up with, and actually, it was, uh, one of the care homes that came up with it was to, when their tenants are out and they're, they're causing some type of a disturbance, but maybe it doesn't rise to the level of a law enforcement response because no crime's been violated, was to provide businesses with, uh, their business numbers and in turn, the businesses could call the care homes and they themselves would respond to pick the, the resident up and take them back if they were causing some type of a problem. Um, in addition to that, um, well, let me go, let me refer to my list. There were, there were a number of things that, uh, they also encouraged documentation of any incidents that came to our attention and when and if criminal prosecution is appropriate, they encouraged it. Um, they, they encouraged those reports be revealed to community care licensing when appropriate as well. So overall, the meeting was, the meetings were, were productive, I felt. It reinforced some of the, the principles that we abide by at Riverbank Police Services and it also enlightened me in terms of, you know, what can be done to, to effectively try to mitigate the problem. So I don't know if there are any questions, but.
Did you, um, bring some of this information of, the, first off, the cooperation and the information you received to the state that you've been talking with, with the care home?
Well, the state, the state was contacted prior to and they encouraged the, uh, the forwarding of reports to them, which is, that's been done, I know that that had been done historically years ago by Riverbank Police Services and that's something that continues, uh, you know, to this day. So, uh, I'm not sure, I'm not sure re-contacting community care licensing would serve a purpose.
Not in, directly into the licensing, but into the cooperation that's coming on down in some of these solutions? Because I can tell you, the city of Hemet and some of the other cities in the inland empire are having a, uh, some of the same issues. Next time I meet with them, I'll tell them what you've done because it's a confrontational, uh, bid between them and their police forces. So this right here can at least start opening some of their other eyes.
I, I can pass it on. I think community care licensing, they're, you know, I think that they're, they're probably aware that, uh, there are different approaches to the same problem, but I can certainly communicate to them.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
I just wanna say, I'm really glad that you, um, have completed this item. I think, I, I'm really, um, glad that we have this information now that we didn't have before 'cause I know it was kind of festering and becoming a, a sort of a big deal. And, uh, so I think that, that this will really help us to, to have a greater understanding between our, our police services and, and the care homes.
Sure.
So appreciate that.
I just, I wanna encourage the public to, you know, if there is a criminal law violation they, they believe is occurring or, or any, uh, pending violence or disturbance, something like that, by all means, call us, uh, so at least you, a deputy can respond and, and sort through what's actually occurred and, uh, either call a care home or, or make an arrest or, or, uh, do nothing if appropriate. So we just wanna make sure that the public knows that, um, you know, we, we do address these issues. We do it every day and depending on what the circumstances are, it's, it's gonna have a different end result, but, um, we don't want people to feel at a loss, whether it's the care homes themselves, the residents, or the public.
I'd also like to say, I don't live too far away from Patterson Road and it seems to me that over the past months, you're having some effect because I'm not seeing certain people that I used to see more frequently and it seems to be getting more under control with these people and I applaud you for that.
Well, thank you. And a lot of that credit goes to the care homes. You know, they, um, it's in their interest to make sure that, uh, the tenants are abiding by their house rules and, uh, not getting into trouble as well. And they, they do a lot to self-manage that also.
This is a public hearing. Is there any comments or questions from the public?
Hi, dear.
Would you please come on up to them?
There's a few of those guys from those places are going down Patterson Road, because I've been to the dollar store, and I always ask them for a dollar, and they always get in your face. And I had one gentleman came up to me, and he got really in my face, and I told him, "You better back off." And he's, I haven't seen this one, but there's another guy, I call him the hamburger guy, because he's always wants a dollar for a hamburger at McDonald's. And they're always down Patterson Road, every day I see them. And I think we need to step in on them a little bit more, because they're going, they're staying at the dollar store, and over at McDonald's, or over at Brian's Grocery Store.
Right, and that's part of it, sorry. Go ahead.
And it's just, every time we get out of the car, you know, got some change, got a dollar, you know, and starting to get real old, same people.
They do have the right to come and go during daytime hours, there's no curfew or anything. They can come and go at their own free will, and that's part of their patient's rights. However, they don't have a right to panhandle or do anything like that. So, if they are panhandling and they're causing a problem, then I encourage you to call police services, and that way we can...
Well, I know McDonald's kicked out a one guy, and they called you guys, and by the time you get there, they're gone.
Well, sometimes...
And you guys are busy, you're sure-handed, I understand that.
Right.
But also, they, you know, it's starting to get the same people over and over, you know, and it looks bad for the city. You know, you get out of your car to go to the dollar store, and the guy's right there and asking for a dollar, you know? It's not a place, and there should be something done with it. The same thing with, you know, on the garbage days, you got all these homeless people going through your garbage. I don't like putting my garbage out, because they're always hitting it and, you know, and everything else, but I gotta put it out Wednesday night, and that's the night they come around, too. And my dogs are barking. I gotta go check. I already got a battery stolen out of my trailer, okay, because I didn't check, I figured it was just a homeless guy going through the garbage. No, I got a battery stolen. And we've been having a lot of problem at the school districts on the buses, so...
Yeah, just for clarification, the homeless transient problem is completely separate from the care home issue, just to make sure everybody understands that.
Those guys are from the care home, too.
Okay.
All right. Any other comment? I think I'll bring this back to the council. Moving on to item 6.4, Community Center and Pool Locker Room Renovation.
Yes, Mayor O'Brien and members of the City Council, this is another strategic plan item that we're providing an update for you this evening. Ms. Sue Fitzpatrick will be providing an update on the initiating plans for improvements to our infrastructure. And I think for the public who doesn't know, Sue is the Director of Parks and Recreation for the city of Riverbank.
Mayor and members of the council, tonight I would like to provide you with a building renovation update. Back in January of 2014, the city of Riverbank set out a request for proposal to 12 architectural firms for the conceptual design of the community center building, the Riverbank Community Pool Locker Rooms, and the City Hall North facade. And, yep.
That was good. You went backwards.
That's as bad as mine.
Anyway, this project is, should I click? Yeah. Part of the strategic plan, with one of the goals being, one of the three-year goals being to improve and maintain infrastructure and facilities. So, our specific objective that our department was responsible for was, by May 1st, the Parks and Recreation Director will present to the City Council the results of their request for qualifications for an architect to prepare a conceptual design for the community center and pool locker rooms. So, we did that, we did send out the 12, we got, in my staff report, I said three, but we actually got six responses from our request for qualifications. We chose the top three, and we were looking for local, we were looking for people that had experience with community centers and the type of thing that we were going to renovate, pool locker rooms, things like that. We chose the top three, and they actually came out and walked the facilities with us, and we were able to converse and kind of get an idea of what experience they had and what ideas they had. Then the top two architects submitted proposals. We asked them to submit a proposal, and we chose commercial architecture, which is out of Modesto, for the project. So, we've gotten through all of those processes. 5,000 will be requested during the 2014-15 fiscal budget process that is upcoming for the architect to do this project for us. What's next is pending the project approval, the architect will meet with city staff and people who use the community center and the pool, and things like that, so they can give input and come up with a conceptual design for each building. Now, the City Hall North facade, what happened with that is I was included in this part of the strategic plan, but it was looking so, in such disrepair, that we jumped ahead and it made you, we had council approve the repair and the painting. What we're going to still do with the architect is have them take a look at the front of City Hall, and how can they make that better? They had some really good ideas, so they're still able to do that. It just will be able to, at least in the meantime, have the wood replaced and painted as is almost under completion. So, what we did ask the architects to do for the conceptual designs is come up with two conceptual designs for each project, and we said if we were able to secure funding for the best, you know, things that we would really want, say at the community center, we went and looked at Escalon, Escalon, we did their community center, and it's about the same size as ours, it's very nice, but they added a whole other room, and that's where their seniors have their lunches and things, they have their own setup, and it's a separate door, so it's very nice. So, things like that would be our dream, that would be ideal. But we asked them to do another conceptual design that would be just the basic. If all we could do is secure the basic funding, we know the floor at the community center, for example, needs to be replaced, and the kitchen needs a lot of work, it needs to be a commercial kitchen. So, that's what we would do, maybe adding in the paneling replacement, a couple of things, but it would be more of the basic. So, what we'll present to council after that process is done, which I expect it would be early in the next fiscal year, because we want to move on with that, is the two designs and the cost estimate, what we'd be looking at, both pool locker rooms, City Hall North facade, and as well as the community center, what we'd be looking at. And that will also give us the power for the grants. We're looking at CDBG funding possibilities, we're looking at any funding sources that we could possibly do, probably some fundraising as well. We'll have the conceptual design to connect to that grant, as well as the cost estimate. So, we'll be pretty far in the process. Any questions on that?
Will beige be part of this? I do have a, I do have, just a couple of comments. The sooner we get the designs out to the public, I think the better off, the more eye-popping that is, the better chances we have. I know in late September, there's going to be a fundraiser for, in the city of Riverbank, I mean, the city of Modesto for charities, we could do something similar to that, a community brunch, where you could get a lot of money fundraising to start developing some of it. If you have, at the same time, you know, the designs at some of our events in the summertime and also at the cheese and wine showcasing, you may attract a Michelin, or somebody else who has deeper pockets.
That would be great. Yeah, that would be great.
We have a couple of people who are investing in the city of Riverbank that have deep pockets, we just need to make sure that they leave their pockets air.
So, this is just the first process, and then we'll have the whole fundraising and securing the funding, but this is a good step in the right direction.
Sue, may I ask, the mayor asks a good question. Is it going to remain beige?
The community center?
I'm saying that because I said...
Well, the community center is no longer beige.
Oh, it's not?
No, we painted it, it's kind of like a, it's off-white. It's off-white. So, we're slowly getting away from the beige.
I want to refer to a couple of workshops I went to this week, that color was the theme to really make yourself stand out.
That's, that's, the example of that is the teen center. When we put the teen center in, we were really wondering how everyone would react, because it's definitely different.
Not beige.
And for those that did not participate in those workshops, or haven't heard me make the comment, I will just sort of indicate that during our economic development workshops last week, one of the comments of the consultant was, "Please ban the beige in downtown, because everything blended together." And so, that is what the mayor and vice mayor are alluding to, because City Hall is in the process of being painted teal. So, it's blue-green, mostly green, to complement the mural across the street. So, that was good news to the consultant, while not as good a news to some others, but it is adding some color, and we're hoping that the architects should move forward. May I ask if, in the midst of those comments, was their direction to move forward quickly and to possibly start the expenditure of these funds before the end of the fiscal year? Was I reading between the lines there?
You haven't, we haven't made those comments yet, because we still have to bring it to from the public.
Oh, okay, thank you, mayor.
Okay, all right. Any other council comments?
I think one thing that we could consider in terms of fundraising is, I don't know what the total plan is, but if there was any sort of plan for landscaping or anything to be included, you could sell, you know, people could get bricks or tiles, or that's how, you know, they raise money to build and remodel some facilities and, you know, national monuments and different things, is selling bricks or tiles, or sponsoring trees, or something of that nature. I was thinking maybe we could do something like that.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there any comments from the public on item 6.4? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for direction by council. What is the desire of the council? Do we move forward and start the process, or do we want to wait?
I think we should get started on some of these. I think it's pretty important to have our, and it kind of falls along with our strategic planning and having a professional operation going on here, and that's my thoughts.
I think we want the city to put on a good face, and we want to attract business, we want to attract people to the farmer's market, to the wine and cheese, to all of these things. I think it's important that we put our best face forward, so move ahead.
I think the sooner we get the information out to the public, the better.
Okay, so I believe you have the direction, we need, we all up here want a facelift.
Okay. So, mayor and council, the, the, a facelift for the buildings, and the, so what I'm taking as direction is that, assuming our budget can handle this, is that go ahead and proceed. This falls under my authority as a city manager, so we can go ahead and get that started before the end of fiscal year. So, thank you for that direction.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Good job. Item 7, comments. Item 7.1, staff comments.
Mayor and members of the City Council, I have a variety of comments this evening, as well as members of the staff. I'd like to just first point out that Love Riverbank was a great success this weekend. I know at least four of you participated, because I saw you there, as well as the police chief, so I'll let you comment on your various experiences there. I also like to comment that there is a Budget Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, April 9th, at 6 o'clock in the City Council chambers. And there is one vacancy on that committee. It is a position that is only, a term that only goes till July, so it's a short term, but there is one more vacancy on the Budget Advisory Committee for anybody who's interested in participating in this year's budget review. In addition, I wanted to let the council know that there is a canvas for the dog licensing going on, so there is an animal control officer knocking on doors. Right now, she's focused on the crossroads neighborhood, and so I just want to let people know if they do see somebody or have somebody knock on their door, and that is, that is something that is going on and sanctioned by the city as part of our animal services control, services. With that, I'd like to now hand it over to Mr. Michael Riddell, who has a brief update for you on the drought.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. With keeping with color and pop, and I have some slides I'll kind of pass out to you.
They're not beige.
This will just kind of give you a little bit of a quick overview. This is something the National Weather Service has put out. As you know, and everybody else knows, it has been raining somewhat in the last few weeks. We need to conserve the amount more. So, if you take a look at those two slides, it paints a pretty bleak picture, as far as the state is concerned with the current drought conditions. I participate in a drought task force throughout the county with the California Office of Emergency Services, so basically I get a weekly report. Now, as far as Riverbank is concerned, and our water in, within the city and our wells, we have no issues. Our wells are doing fine. We don't have any quantity or quality problems within our water system, and I don't anticipate any. That being said, with the way things are going currently in the drought, is one of the things that will occur with the irrigation districts cutting back on the amount of water they're going to give to the farmers will mean the farmers are going to start pumping, and that can become an issue for us. It will take more than just one season of doing this for it to start affecting us, so what we got to hope for is what we don't get this year, we certainly pick up next, because you can see through that report that we're basically looking at about a three-year deficit as far as our water is concerned. And right now, we're only currently running about 50% on this year alone, and they kind of come up with their little water bucket there, and it kind of shows you, you know, what we would have to do to be able to recover off of their five and eight station testing there. But I wanted to assure the council and the community members that we currently do not have any issue within our water system, but we do need to conserve. And one of the things that I did like, that I heard about the farmer's market, was we will certainly be able to participate with that, as far as water conservation is concerned within the city. So, that's kind of it, just kind of a quick and down and dirty type thing.
Sir, can you, if not tonight, at another meeting, talk to us about the conservation efforts the city is making? There is a local newspaper within this county that has made comments that none of the cities have taken any adequate steps in this drought, and I know that that's not true for the city of Riverbank.
No, because we, the city of Riverbank, currently has a water use restriction ordinance on our books that give us the ability to enforce. We have already started contacting the public, we now, basically, we've had a water, a refrigerator magnet made up. There you go. There you go. For the local residents, that they can stick it on their refrigerator, tells them what day they can water, when there shouldn't be watering, and what they should be doing, and how they should be doing it. We, our water staff, actually all the city staff, when they happen to go through a neighborhood, if they find somebody that's using water excessively, we will stop and talk to them and remind them of the effort and what we should be trying to conserve here, type thing to try to do at that. I don't anticipate us getting to the point, at least not within the next couple of months, where we'll go out and actively enforce unless it starts becoming, you know, something that we're seeing a lot. And I think most people understand, most people have a very good picture of what's occurring in the state of California right now with the water uses, because there are some cities and some areas that are in pretty dire need. So, I think it's finally getting people's attention.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then moving, I'd like to actually have Ms. Fitzpatrick provide an update on Riverfest, which will actually include some environmentally friendly items, including water conservation.
Mayor and members of the council, I have some flyers that I'll leave on the table here for the, both the fun run, the 5K fun run, and also the Riverfest, for anyone who would like that. But we, the planning for Riverfest is going extremely well. It's going to be April 26th, and the 5K run will start at the Trailhead at 9:00 a.m., and then the event will be from 10:00 to 3:00. And we have over 30 vendors secured, we've got some major sponsors, a lot of fun things for kids to do. We're going to have a miniature train ride, climbing wall... wall, just all kinds of fun things. Carrie, our rec supervisor, is doing a real good job in planning this event. So just a reminder to come out and if anyone wants to sign up for the 5K run, we are taking registrations. Okay?
Thank you.
So it'll be Saturday, April 26th. And Riverfest, actually going right into the next comment that I have, is in regards to the economic development and marketing seminar that I mentioned earlier, which of course, one of the takeaways was ban the beige, which I of course embraced. However, one of the other things was really building on our connection to the river and something that the mayor and the council have often said is that we need to put the river back into Riverbank and the consultant really embraced that. Another thing that came out of that was the cheese and wine and that that was often commented as something people knew Riverbank for. And with the city taking a lead role in that event, I think there's also an opportunity to build our brand and our story around the river and cheese and wine. And so that was a positive. And a couple of other takeaways that I had was this consultant was very practical and took some of our, the conceptual vision and identified how you can break that down into practical, reachable steps in the short and medium term and how to, how to plan realistically for some of the cycles of development that take place. You rarely go from point A to point Z in one move. It takes a number of cycles and I thought that it was very practical in that way. In addition to that, there was the creating distinction and interest with color and telling your story and to be authentic, to use your current assets and to be authentic to who you are and what your connection is. And I thought those were very good. She's going to be coming back, most likely on May 1st, the afternoon of May 1st, and there will be a public overview of those discussion items. So that was very positive. Another very positive thing is that I went to the Planning Commissioners Academy with three of our planning commissioners, Mr. Anthony McKinney, one of our commissioners also participated in that academy along with Carlos Philip Hudra and Patricia Hughes. And then our consultant contract donated his time as well to be at that academy. It was very interesting to hear how other cities approach issues. At the city council workshops, it was very consistent in terms of what was considered best practice. And while there are consistent best practices for planning commissions as well in terms of legal, it was interesting how they did take more unique approaches based on the subject matter, their unique community needs and interests. And so you saw a little bit more differences of maybe opinion or differences of approaches as you heard the different speakers. But all in all, I felt it was really, it was really positive to see how you can approach things uniquely. And one of the biggest takeaways that I think I shared with you in my brief memo was that the change towards electric vehicles and how that is moving very quickly and that is going to be an issue over the course of the next decade for, for cities to deal with and a fundamental change in transportation. And we saw some evidence of that just recently in the Modesto Bee that had an article on Uber and the application for those who want to use car services. And those are advancing, particularly in the larger metropolitan areas. So it was a very good use of time. I want to thank the commissioners for taking time away from their work and their families to participate. I think it was a very good investment. And the commissioners also asked me to communicate to you their appreciation for your support of them and their education and to facilitate their better service to the city. So thank you for that. And that concludes staff comments at the current time.
Thank you. For council comments, Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yeah, I just had a couple of things this evening. I got a chance to go down to very early one morning when Cat Country was here and celebrating their hometown visits through Stanislaus County. And it was pretty cool to see all the folks coming out at, you know, 5:30. I think I just missed you. So that was kind of fun and exciting to see in our town and it was good. I have Riverfest on there. Be sure to put that on your calendars. We've heard a little bit about that tonight. I'm also very excited about the farmer's market and want to encourage folks to put those on your calendars and get those going. We've already talked about the BAC. I did bring show and tell this evening and I just wanted to encourage some folks to put these on your, on your refrigerator. This is next to the magnet that I have from the sheriff's department too that I found very helpful. I knew that there were certain water days to water, but I don't know about you guys, but my time, I didn't work properly, so I ended up having to turn it off because it just kept going and it didn't water on the days I was trying to get it to water on. So now I do it manually, but I found this really helpful. So I just wanted to share that with the public tonight and ask them to put them on your refrigerators and take a look at them. And I think every little bit will help. And last thing, show and tell. If you haven't got your activity guide for upcoming events for the summer and spring, be sure to pick up one of those also. Thanks, Sue, for putting this out. There's lots of good stuff going on. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barbara Martinez, please.
I just want to thank everyone that attended Love Riverbank on Saturday. An extra thank you to Sylvia Jimenez for leading the event. And as project leader for the public service, we surprised city departments, fire, police services, the post office and the library with cookies and with a special thank you for everything that they do for our city. I also attended a conference to learn more about hydraulic fracturing. This is a process of oil and water drilling that is currently being used and it's very, it was very helpful in understanding this process and what the future will hold for us as we look for alternative methods to supply oil and water. Also attended the branding workshop that Jill was talking about earlier and as we all discussed Route 108 renovations. And it was very interesting to hear some of the comments and some of the excellent ideals that were generated by the participants. And I also wanted to thank John Anderson and his efforts to work with the owners of the Windmill Water Station on Sierra. The lot looks very nice and I thank the owners too because they cared enough to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tucker.
I think it was Mahatma Gandhi maybe who said, you know, you have to be the, I'm paraphrasing, be the change that you want to see in the world. And I think that's certainly something that I thought of when I was participating in Love Riverbank. And what a fabulous event that is, something I would do over and over again. I worked at the community gardens along with Vice Mayor Campbell and there was certainly plenty of work there and the sheriff joined us as well, I mean, our chief. And there's certainly plenty of work to be done there. So, you know, if anybody has a volunteer spirit and would like to come out, I'm sure that they would appreciate you coming out and working at the community gardens. But it was a wonderful event and we worked really hard and I think we got a lot done. I think it certainly looks a lot better than it did. But a lot of good projects and I would just encourage anybody who hasn't done Love Riverbank to participate in the future.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I agree with everything that Councilmember Tucker said about I Love Riverbank. One particular thing that I enjoyed working at the community gardens on Saturday was to see the people out there with their children helping to clean the gardens up. They were really overran and I have to give special applause to Councilmember Tucker. I never saw sweat roll off of her so much and I was just really pleased to see that. She really was a go-getter and it was a pleasure to work with her. So it was really neat to see all the children and everybody working together. And by the time we finished, along with the help of our police chief, we had that lot pretty well cleaned up, the weeds down, and it was looking pretty good. Likewise too, I would just like to encourage everyone that the nicer times are here. When you go out to the parks, pick up a piece of litter, garbage, it'll help keep the parks nice for all of us to use and let's enjoy the springtime.
Thank you. Love Riverbank, I think it's a great volunteer day and I'd like to see more volunteers in the next couple of rounds. I think we need to advertise a little bit further in advance. Ms. Jimenez will probably not be participating in the next one, so we're going to need to have a volunteer, the volunteer take her place until she can volunteer again. The California League of Cities is fighting hard to keep local control of some of the major issues. One of them is the medical marijuana initiative that is run currently by the state and is not very effective. The league, along with the police chiefs and local district attorneys, have come up with a very good plan and that is progressing through. I believe we'll have support, but it retains local control on how you want to run the medical marijuana. Some of the other issues that are out there that people, local controls want to give to the state is how do you manage waste from restaurants? And they want the state to tell us how to manage it. I prefer if we have an issue, do it locally, but there's a lot that want to have the state participate. Another one is Eggman's Law Initiative. She's from Stockton, who wants the land use issues to be regulated by the state in agriculture. To me, that's an invitation for HCD to dictate more to the agricultural areas of where they can build and it just doesn't make sense. One other initiative, which I think we all should be concerned with, at the end of this year, there will be no local regulation of massage parlors. There's been a proliferation of them, especially in Southern California, which may say something about their mores. And they're unregulated. They're sex trade industry and some maybe even be underage. And at the end of this year, local law enforcement cannot go in and investigate. They can no longer do any entrapment, not entrapment, what do they call that?
Stings.
Stings, that's it. Thank you. And it just appears that they're going to be, something that should be very regulated to be unregulated, especially in the local communities, where you have zero say in the future on where they can be and how to regulate them. And I believe that we should take a close look as the bills are advancing, what we want to actually say to the legislature, what we think should go forward and which should be killed. And I believe that goes along with our Legislative Action Day on the 26th of April, correct?
23rd.
23rd. 23rd. I'm going to make sure I have that correct. But that, if you can't participate, at least we should be sending the letters. We should be sending the letters anyway, but actually going up there and participating would be great. I know I've been asking about district elections and after we spoke the other day, I started doing the backtrack and Annabelle, I think this might be in your line with the city manager, when would the drop date day be where we would have to be with a decision on district elections for this upcoming election cycle? The way I looked at it was the 17th of July, but I don't know what Lee Lundgren may need. I think hers is one June.
That's right. And we do have it scheduled to, I'm bringing it in May, so we can get a head start because at this point, we're not sure of where we're going to be at. So we definitely have to have it no later than the first meeting in June.
Okay.
To the county of whether we're going to request the county to render services to Riverbank.
So I think we need more updates more frequently.
Yes. Mayor and members of the city council, as you know, there are a lot of legal issues associated with this and we, the consultant report is expected in the next couple of weeks. I've not gotten a firm commitment for April 22nd. We'll definitely do it no later than May 13th. Mr. Hallinan may have an update on that for us. It is a very concern, also too, there are some laws related to having, that we may need to take it to the voters for approval of the plan before it's actually implemented. And so those are some things that we need to work out in consultation with our legal counsel.
The reason why I brought it up is that there are some, there's a new initiative in, in the senate, the state senate, to make it more prescriptive on the numbers and on the procedure. So at one point, it's going to be 100,000 people and I don't know if that's within, you know, if they're combining special districts or just cities. So that's something that we have to look at. One other area, just very quickly, sir, you brought up homelessness. I just want to address a little bit. San Bernardino has taken a look at what it costs to manage homeless population not housed, okay, with police contact, mental health, hospitalization, damages to the local businesses is approximately $3,000 a month. But if they house them and provide them with some services, volunteer services, is $680 a month. So I think that that's something that this county should look into and I'll be speaking with the chief on that. We do ourselves a disservice by providing them food and monies. If you said, okay, you want a dollar, I'm going to text it into a special fund where you can get help. You can get housing. And San Bernardino has been able to recoup tens of millions of dollars each year by not providing, you know, certain services and directing them into a home. Now, some people will not go into a home and you know that, but you can keep harping on them. They've been able to get people 20 years homeless into homes in San Bernardino where they've just reached their 1,000 homeless homes, homed. So you've made a good point. I don't know what the issues are here in Riverbank, but I think we'll be discussing it in the future. Thank you for bringing that up. With that, we're going to go to items eight, closed session, consistent item 8.1, public employee performance evaluation. Item 8.2, conference with real property negotiators, LRA. With that, I open it to the public to make any comments on items 8.1 or 8.2. Seeing